The Roseville Board of Commissioners Work Session, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Just want to thank everybody in attendance and everybody's watching online. Thank you for joining us tonight. We don't, we don't have a, a long agenda tonight, just a few items, mostly from planning. And I think we got a closed session at the request of the attorney. But other than that, I think, I think it'd be pretty, hopefully be a pretty short night. So thank you, everybody, for attending. As you notice, I think Paul is out of town, Commissioner Vega. I forgot where he went, but I think he's, he's out of town tonight. And Lynn, who's been battling a, a sickness. So he's hoping to be here, but just got a word a couple hours ago that he still is not well enough to feel like he's can come out. So, so it is a work session. There's not a lot of decisions tonight, so we will proceed. So thank, thank you, everybody, for attending. First item is consideration this agenda. You can see there's three really items on there. Is there any discussion on that? Can entertain a motion for that?
So move.
Second, anybody?
Oh, second.
Okay, I got a motion second, any other discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you, appreciate that. And then it's one item that's been placed on consent agenda. It's just the board meeting date changed from October the seventh to October ninth. It's my understanding that's the National Night Out for Police Officers and Police Departments. I think we have that planned here in Roseville for October the seventh. That kind of conflicts with the meeting. So it's been a request to change it to October the ninth. I don't, I don't have a conflict for October ninth. I guess, I guess, you know, we used to change if we had to have it on Mondays. We, we did Mondays a lot. Is there a reason Thursdays is the best date? Who came up with Thursdays or is there a reason for Thursdays?
I looked at the past and it was moved to a Thursday the last time. Because it was, National Night Out was on that Tuesday. And so I was just looking at how it was moved in the past with, with reference to that specific week. And it was done on that Thursday instead of the Tuesday.
Yeah, I think, I think that was, I remember that. I think that was election night. And we didn't want to do it on Monday because everybody's finishing up their campaigning and stuff on Mondays. And a lot of activities going on, so we moved it to after the election. But it's okay, I mean, but you know.
We're open to that. Staff wise, staff wise, Mondays, that Monday is fine. It doesn't enter, it doesn't, um, well, actually.
Well, we've, we've advertised, we've advertised.
It's already been advertised for that.
We've advertised Thursdays. I was just, I was just wondering.
Yeah, I was just looking at the past. I didn't know that.
You could advertise again.
No, I, I think it was just a question, because I think Mondays, a lot of town boards have meetings on Mondays. So, you know, Mondays might be good in the future. Except for elections, you know, I think we would want a night before the election. I think that's the reason we did a Thursday. Thursday is a weird night for a lot of people, but I looked at my calendar and I'm good for Thursday. Everybody else good?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, so that's fine with me. So I will, is any other discussion with that? Any more? So I will entertain a motion for, for moving the date change from October seventh to October ninth. Is there anybody would like to make a motion?
So moved.
All right, we got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion second, any other discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like the ayes have it, ayes do have it, so the motion is approved. So next town board meeting in October will be the ninth. So that's pretty good, a little ways off. I think, I think it's extra week in there anyway, so we're looking at, we're looking at probably about twenty-one days or more. Item number four is the LDO text amendment and Main Street zoning updates. I see Michael is here for that, Plan Department. So I will turn it over to you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. In the memo that was presented here, just a little one page, you've kind of got three items to cover here. And it's being a sensitive of your time and how much maybe time you want to spend this evening on each one. The first would is set up to be LDO section six point one about signs. Number two is a delivery of some of those maps that were requested about the Main Street corridor and looking at where zoning is that would allow the non-residential or commercial type uses. And then number three is a little bit of a progress on that applicant initiated text amendment, TA twenty-five zero six, specifically about that part A, the self-storage enclosed use, which that text amendment was postponed from the September meeting to the, now the October ninth meeting. And we'll have a full, you know, revision there and conversation and continue that conversation on that. But staff was able to put a little bit of words on, on paper, so to speak, and we're showing that to you tonight. Maybe to garner a little more input for both ourselves and the applicant, who I know is watching from home on that item. So, and where that self-storage enclosed use might be permitted kind of dovetails into item number two on our agenda, where that zoning districts that permit commercial uses is tonight. So I'm going to go through these presentations. If you want to talk about each one after we hit kind of the topic ends, again, signs, Main Street corridor, and then that self-storage use, we can, or you can let me get through everything and then kind of have, you know, a free for all. So we'll see.
See how everybody flows with this.
Yeah, let's, let's see how fast I can get through these. So again, the, the first item is section six point one, signs. Staff has gone ahead and assigned a application number for this, you know, for, for reference and so forth. So I do anticipate bringing an ordinance to the board eventually about this to update and revise the sign section. And we'll first have to go to the planning board, but we're kind of starting with some board input here before we go to planning board and then comes back with an ordinance for the board to fully vet and hopefully approve. So this will be TA twenty-five dash zero seven. In the packet, we did provide you a first blush or first draft of a markup. So as you go through there, you see the highlights, the, the strike throughs and the, and the colored language and so forth. So you can see some of the changes that staff's identified. Some of these have been longstanding things we'd love to change that we've identified long ago. And then some of them are also some of the more fresher things as we've gotten into more active enforcement and, and so forth. I mean, mainly on the commercial corridors of town, but really it's about commercial signage. In anticipation of that, today I did a little drive-through town and I started taking some pictures because nothing tells the story about what we're talking about than pictures. Now, this is a little more sensitive because these are pictures from our town. So none of these are meant to be necessarily examples of something that we want to, you know, just go and pick up today, but this will also show the board how many signs are out there and what staff sees and is, is in, you know, and ask to enforce upon and pick up and clean up these signs when they're in violation. So this first set of pictures are those that by my eye and my knowledge of the road right-of-ways and where those edges are, are in the right-of-way. And location of any type of sign, any type of sign in the right-of-way is prohibited by this section. And to my knowledge, neither the NC DOT and I'm, and I know that the Board of Commissioners have not given permission to any of these folks to put their signs in those right-of-ways. So these have been placed in a right-of-way without ask permission or permission. Okay. Here's one along Rogers Road that's quite visible. Here's another one that I think came up just rather recently along Rogers Road. One there on Main Street near Hampton Point. Another one by that same particular business. This is a new iteration of placement of signs on wooden electrical or phone poles. These three are not businesses in town necessarily, but these are ones that we've seen as quote unquote ground placed. I like to call them bandit signs because they don't get a permit and you're almost usually in the right-of-way, thus being illegally placed. So that's a new iteration of how to place these signs.
Is that in town?
Yeah, where are those?
That is Long Jones Boulevard.
Because that's, that's, that's not legal, I don't think, because even from a safety, I mean, that's a private pole.
Exactly. Whoever owns that pole would, you would think first right of, right of dispatch would come around and pull those off if they could. I didn't get out necessarily. I couldn't tell exactly the height, but I sure as heck could not have hammered those up there myself. Here's another one. This is along Granite Falls Boulevard. I believe in, again, along Granite Falls Boulevard. That was more of a realty house for sale or something of that nature. It had a price on it, if I recall. There, again, I believe this is Granite Falls Boulevard. Hundred percent sure where these two are, but these are clearly kind of out of town, you know, type of signage that you see. One is a realtor, one is a construction company. Another home builder sign placed and leaning against a speed limit sign. Here's one right back of the sidewalk in town. And then I saw several from this, this group around town. So the next group then, again, by my eye and basic knowledge of where right-of-ways are and so forth, probably do look outside the right-of-way, so they're not categorically by location, simply not permitted under the LDO. These could be potentially permitted if permits were sought, or they could be under that exempt list, which means they're permitted, but you don't have to get a permit from the town to do them. Usually those are far more small-scale, temporary nature, meaning temporary in the duration of, for the purpose of the sign.
Michael, before we see those pictures, going back to the first set, since they are in the right-of-way, they shouldn't be there. Are, are our Public Works people informed to remove those or what's going to happen with those?
I believe we're discussing the routine of, you know, going around town.
Cleaning up the.
With, with the eyes set, set for picking up signs as opposed to doing other duties that the Public Works crews do. But that is on their, their cycle of pickup.
Okay, thank you.
And certainly this little roundup today that I saw will be up front too. There's a lot out there. It's not one or two. This was a ten-minute drive around just a few streets, but they are the more prominent streets in our town. So again, just kind of leading with some of these questions about, you know, does the board look at some of these signs that we're about to see and say, I'd like to have a way to permit these? Maybe if and how, if and how, why, you know, duration, as I say, location, size, number. Should the property owner or the, or the sign owner need to get a permit? Or should this go on the exempt list where again, folks can do them without asking permission for them? And when you do that exempt from get, having to get a permit, compliance is then often, or sorry, is enforced when we see a violation. Meaning if there was a size limit on a sign that you didn't have to get a permit for and it turned out to be a four-by-eight piece of sheik, sheikwood, you know, well, that would be a violation and we would enforce upon the sign for the size limitation, not the fact that it was placed there in that particular location without a permit. Didn't need a permit, but it exceeded the size limitation. It's sort of the on-your-honor. That's what the exempt list is pretty much. It's on-your-honor to comply with these standards. And so enforcement comes after the fact, unfortunately, not before the fact, when you have to get a permit. And then again, the, the complete opposite direction would be simply prohibit all of these signs because none of these are what the town wants to have occurring in the town. And that's a rather easier one, but then that, that, that is maximum enforcement, right? Because these signs will continue to be placed and it just places more, more negativity on signs from the enforcement perspective. Here's one for a, a business that had opened up. It's a, some, some material banner hung on the side of a building. That's clearly not a permanent type sign. These two out in front of the, the big public signed for one of the tenants there. There were three here at the swim club, just back of the sidewalk and back of that, the utilities and so forth. So this appears it might be on private property. And if you call from our last discussion about wind signs and attention signs or attention flags, that is what we were talking about. Some people call these feather banners. So it's, it's one of those murky sign types of which one is it? And does the town want to permit them to promote the use of them? Or does the town want to regulate, maybe prohibit these? Here's another one from that site. So, sorry, that, that concludes the sign presentation. Again, the, the board has a markup of section six point one before them. And then I thought just some, looking at some of these signs and, and what's out there on the town would help stir the, the conversation about what does the board like? And if you say you'd like certain signs in certain places, we can absolutely make sure that the code speaks to that, revise the, the amendment and bring it forth to the board.
So you said something I didn't quite, I didn't, I don't fully, I'll just make sure we clarify. We still got a permit process for, for temporary signs, right?
Temporary, if it fits the category of temporary, yes. If it's under the exempt section, no, there is no permit required. That's the nature of exempt, permitted without a permit.
I know the church, you know, we went through this for several years. You know, when they had Bible school, for the week of Bible school, they had a big sign they put up and they had to get a permit every year to put the sign up and stuff. Is that still the same?
That's a temporary sign, yes.
That's permitted?
Usually they, they align with special events.
And they had to declare the number of days it would be up and when they would put it up and when they would take it down and all that kind of.
Thinking the code by nature and temporary signs is thirty days max.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
But we still got that?
Yeah, that is.
Because really, really, I, I, I think a new business should be able to put something up temporarily for a number of days, thirty days, forty-five days, sixty days, whatever, whatever we think is appropriate. Because you want to draw attention to your new business. I, I feel like that's a little different than something that's been in business a long time. So I wouldn't want to, you know, I, I know Five Guys have got a lot of signs up down there. They're brand-new business and, you know, I can, I can, I can feel for that a little bit. You know, you want to.
This is the exact question staff wants to have with you, to get that direction of how can we create a permitting process for the things that we do want, but we don't want them abused, right? You might not want a five-year in business to all of a sudden put out now hiring. But again, we can't regulate the content. It's the type of sign, the location, the size, et cetera. But in temporary nature, I think you can get a little more specificity as to the purpose or intent of that sign because it's inherently being asked for a short-term period. You could put stipulations on there. You cannot get a second temporary sign within X months of the last one you got because somebody would get continual forty-five day permits, right, for a temporary sign over and over and over again. And that sign out there never leaves. So kind of how to stop the abuse without, with, with being business-friendly. So, you know, content neutral has to be the case, but how can we do this? Staff has thought about somehow relating it to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for a new business or certificate of completion for, for when a business opens. So it gets that first opening of a new business, the allowance to do what we're seeing occurring, such as down at the Walbrook development, without being punitive to that and allowing that, but not, again, letting it be abused. When you do have a shopping center like that one where you're going to have multiple tenants coming online, they're all going to want them though. And that's potential one of the, the fatal flaws of this, the, the level of allowance to maybe allow folks to do this. If you had a strip center that all opened up at once, they would all be potentially getting those temporary signs for, yeah, I don't want to say the words necessarily on the sign, but you know, you know what I'm saying? Things like now hiring or newly opened, coming soon even. So all of those things relate to new businesses and it's that balance of being pro for your business community, but also being sensitive to what can be you to sign delight by something.
Yeah, for, for the bigger shopping centers in, like this plate, this one here, you know, we got a sign out front with all the names. If you, I guess you have to pay to do that. I'm not sure of the.
But that's permanent sign.
Because, because really the landowner owns the sign. But you know, I don't know, I know a lot of places have that. I don't, I haven't seen one at Cobblestone yet. I don't think they have one. I think Walbrook has one. I know, I know they got.
Has a monument sign. They, I don't believe they have tenants in there, but they've got the slots for them. And again, that's full, fully permitted, et cetera.
But that, that was supposed to be the way to, for them to advertise without everybody putting their signs up is the monument, you call it a monument sign.
Right.
That has their names on it.
The large sign basically with the marquee and the, the anchor tenant usually, and then, you know, the sub-tenants there, very typical shopping center type. That's, that's permanent signage though, and that's fully regulated. You always need a permit. Kind of what the pictures show are things that fit into those temporary or the exempt list. And that's the bulk of, you know, energy spent on signs.
Yeah, I think, I think the, and we haven't had signs, you know, we've been here a long time. So signs were a big deal prior to COVID, where, you know, businesses, Michael may have been here, where, you know, business and signs. I haven't heard a whole lot about signs because we have been regulating them since COVID. But, but I think, I think the idea at one time the town had was, you know, it's, it's to regulate it signs. Everybody get happy with what we want to regulate, so you don't have to put up these temporary signs. Some things has to be temporary. Bible school, once a year, you know, you, you know, that has to be temporary. So it's a few things that has to be temporary because, you know, we, we used to do, we used to do strawberry stand, you know, seasonal strawberry stand, you put a sign up. So some things are, but I think for businesses, it wasn't intended to be temporary signs. If somehow we figure out how to re-regulate it for a permit sign, you know. Does that make sense?
It does. And thinking back, you know, even five years ago, the numbers of businesses in this town was half of what it is.
Yeah, and I, I think.
Volume.
I think that may apply about everything except for new stores, you know. New stores may be handled. You know, we used to, we used to have a big problem with the sales, you know, people putting sale, you know, weekend sale, blowout sales and stuff. We hadn't seen that a whole lot, you know, lately.
Forty-five days does sound good, but you've mentioned enforcement and abuse several times. So what is the estimated enforcement costs that would be associated with that?
Well, it's all.
To keep the abuse down.
Current staff. Current, current planning staff are the enforcement for signs right now. Mr. McFarland absolutely helps from the economic development side with his connection to the business communities, but by and large, staff performs enforcement.
Pre-COVID, we had somebody doing it though, I think at one time. Didn't Michael, you remember the lady that was doing the sign?
In, in twenty, yeah, in twenty twenty-two, we had a, for a very short period of time, we had a funded position. It was a half position or, yeah, and we had that person on staff for about six months, but they unfortunately had to. And we've not filled that. We've rechanged or reallocated those, you know, jobs in the planning department since then. So that's not something that the town has currently budgeted. But we just absorb it in-house.
So is, is, uh, for sale signs by realtors, is that somehow exempt where?
I believe that fits under the residential section as an exempt sign or permitted without a permit, which means, yeah, every home that goes on the market, you put your Caldwell Banker or whatever up there, that doesn't need a permit. That's exempt, yeah.
As well as those open house signs?
Exactly, exactly.
All of that is.
It speaks to, you know, garage sale, you know, one, two, three mains having a garage, you know, that's fine. You can do that. Those, those little things are covered. It's more these business signs that we see where it doesn't fit the mold. Or again, one person says, that's not an attention flag, it's a, it's a wind sock, it's a wind this or that. And then we say, well, okay, then it's a wind sign and that's prohibited. Well, no, no, it's this other thing. So those are, those are the things that staff struggles with. They're, they're obviously popular because they're all over the place. Folks have, that's significant amounts of money in those to do. They don't ask permission. I could tell you that. They're not coming to the planning department and saying, can I get a permit for this, that sign?
I, I see Malcolm, I see Malcolm here. So, you know, maybe before we finalize this thing, let's talk to the chamber about, you know, make sure it be. Because I, I know, I was trying to think what was the one that was most controversial back when we last did the sign. I don't, when was the last time we did this sign thing? It's been.
Well, obviously the sign ordinance that we have today is from the LDO adoption in twenty twenty.
Yeah, but we did a big sign thing prior to that.
Prior to that, okay.
And we probably just LDO, we didn't do a whole lot except for bringing in what was in the UDO. But it was a big question about these, these signs that's right in, as you walk into a store, right on the, in, in the, in the shopping center. You know, you go into the grill and they have the, I think they call them sandwich board signs. Yeah, and they have the special today on there or, you know, are they permitted?
There's a specific section about there. There's even a nice picture of what it's meant to entail. Yeah, those are permitted. Usually that is supposed to be in front of the storefront.
Right.
And thinking a prototypical shopping center, even like this one here, that would be in front of your door, in front of your space, right? Which is far, far, far away from the Main Street corridor, not out there by the sidewalk.
Right.
Apples and oranges, but yeah, those are covered and those are permitted in.
Because that, that was the thing, because one time we, we didn't do it.
It worked, okay.
That'd been years ago and it caused a big problem because I think, I think you need that. I mean, you know, I think it makes sense to, right at your, right at your door.
Yeah, right. And again, in a lot of situations like Cobblestone, your front door is nowhere near visible from a public right-of-way. So there's no passing by visibility to that. You would have to be up on that facade of that building to see the sign and see that message board out there to say, you know, what's for special today? And that's all on private property too. That's, you know, that's one of the main course things here is we have so many violations of people placing them in the right-of-ways. But then a private property, again, where does the town want them to be located? Numbers, numbers of signs, size of signs, et cetera. And again, this, the permanent signs, the ones on the wall, the blade signs, the foundational monument sign at the front of the building by the driveway entrance, all of those are covered and handled and those are not, staff can tell you, not an issue. It's all of the things that fit in the gaps.
So are you saying that on, that you said the private property, you, you said the number of signs, the size of the signs. Are you saying that we can tell them what to put on their private property as far as where the signs are because they're so close to the right-of-way?
That's what the regulations are for, to stipulate.
Private property.
Signs on private property, yes.
Basically size and stuff, right?
Size, number. Again, you can, you can, you can think about what that worst-case scenario is, or somebody exploiting the permissive. You put one sign up that says B, U, Y, buy, you know. You can get inventive and really abuse the system if we don't capture a, a maximum number of signs.
Yeah. So you told me, yeah, you know, it's, it's interesting, every situation not the same. You know, if you come in this shopping center, you know, you, you've got a front, so the sign can, you know, out here, a sign on, you know, where, where the seafood store is, you know, what's, what was the name of that, Off the Hook or something? You know, it's right on the storefront. But you take something like Five Guys, it's got more than one front to it, you know. So I, I don't know how you, it would be fair to limit them to one side, I don't think.
So.
You know what I'm saying? Because circumstances mean something, the way, you know, the way you.
Yeah, visibility, proximity to the street, whether there's a large mature buffer between the street and the front of the building so that it's invisible due to the buffering, which is another code requirement of land development, et cetera. Yeah, you're absolutely right. There's uniquenesses to some properties that don't lend itself to maybe the same set of rules. To be clear, the LDO does allow each business three building-mounted signs. So if you're a suite and you have, you're the middle suite and you have a front and a back, you honestly can't exercise your three. You could put a sign on the front and sign on the back. You really don't have a third facade to put it on. If you were the corner, you could have the corner then. We have discussed internally, what about a four-sided building that's visible from four public right-of-ways? They would want a sign on each side. Right now, the code would limit you to three, so they'd have to pick and choose which one. That's, again, that's a deeper dive into the sign regulations that really haven't caused a stir by applicants that we've dealt with. But that, that's another topic there that, again, but to, but to make it clear, the, the LDO does not restrict a business to one sign. There's, they get three per building mounted type. Then again, most of the problems seem to be the ones that they just put in the grass around the property or out by the road, which is an inherently illegal location if it's in the right-of-way. Really, it's, I'm looking for some direction from the board as to whether they want to be more permissive on the things that we do see occurring to drive business to be business-friendly? Or do we want to be more restrictive and to get rid of some of that visual clutter, if you want to call it that, of signage to be more regulatory and just give everybody the same.
Everybody the same.
Three, sort of three signs per business. You get to put your signage on the monument sign for the complex if you're in a multi-tenant complex.
Yes.
And then any version of temporary for things like brand-new openings, new tenants, et cetera. You know, working some allowances for things like that.
Do we, when we issue a sign permit, do we give them any kind of sticker or anything to go on it? So it can be evident from the. So it can be evident from the street that is.
There is none, that's a idea that's floated, which would be a visual cue to say the public works department as they're going around trying to identify and clean up those that are unpermitted, to have a sticker of approval or sticky sticker of issuance on the town for one sign that could look very much like one that doesn't. That's a, that's a good idea and something that we've, we've thought about. It's a, it's an added process to the system, of course. It would be a physical process where.
One concern about permissiveness is with the increased number of businesses growing that it won't take long to junk up our roads if we are too permissive. I mean, we've had a lot.
It's, it's potential.
It is.
Because when, if you allow all the businesses to do it, that means you're allowing all the businesses to do it.
Right.
Again, when one business in a complex has one, it does not look like that much of an issue, right? And if you get used to that, but what you allow one, you, you allow all. Unless you come up with a regulation that's like first in, first served, you know, like this complex can have two feather banner signs out near the road but on private property no more, well then the first two businesses that elect to do that could do it, but then you're not being quite equitable.
I think if they're, if it's, they're brand new businesses, if it's a brand new development, if each business did it for thirty days, then that's, that's a party out front for what, maybe two, three months, maybe?
Probably closer to a year.
You think a year?
Look at just Wallbrook, we've had businesses, well, Publix opened in May. We've only got, what, four or five possibly, four months later and a whole bunch more still to come, so.
But that's, theirs are coming down every time.
Well, that's, but it will continue, you know, just for open, just, just observing that, it does take a while. They're not all opening at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it probably do, but you, you know, Publix would be the first one to expire.
Yeah.
Sure.
And their first sign to come down before the next, you know.
Right.
I think for marketing reasons, let them have their forty-five days, every single one of them. And if the three come on at the same time, then that's drawing more attention to that development for the businesses that are in there. That's, I think for marketing purposes and to help get their name out there, I think they need it. I don't, I don't think it could hurt from that standpoint. Too many? What's too many?
Well, when you're, you're talking to the person, you have to make that judgment.
Just when your time expires, take it down.
It can be too many.
But then how do you decide who, who gets to advertise and who doesn't? As a new, brand new business coming to town?
Part of its duration, part of its number of signs you put up, those are what Michael's looking for direction about.
Right, but I'm saying, does everybody not get the same forty-five days? And does everybody not get the same, depending on the size of your store, number of signs? Publix, you got three, four signs because you're so big. This little, whoever has a smaller store, do you only get one sign? You know, I, I, I don't know, do they need three signs? Maybe they need one over here and one over here and one over there.
That is one equitable way to do it based on square footage of the space. I could do that math and determine if you earned one, two, three, you know? So that's, that's administratable, honestly, if that were to be the, the decided way to do it. You could go by road frontage, but again, you're going to have that business that's not on a road frontage, right?
Yeah.
That doesn't have frontage, Ace Hardware, for instance, you know, that's like, doesn't have road frontage. So they would be nixed out with the standard allowed signage based on your road frontage.
But road frontage is a sign in itself, to me, you know?
Just being on a road front is.
Yeah, that's one of their signs right there. Okay, then maybe they can have one on this end of the road and one on that end. But then the one on the, the store on the backside of that, they don't have any storefrontage, so do they, don't they get their three signs?
Yeah.
If they need up to three signs.
Signs internal to the shopping center like where Five Guys and so forth, they've got signs on the inside for that local parking lot as you go in there. Can't be visible from Maine or Virginia Water, but obviously they need a sign if you walk up to the store. So they will put a sign there always, even though it doesn't face a public street.
Yeah.
To, in, in the, preserve time here, you know, I, I think we've heard a lot tonight. I think staff can continue to work on this, work up another draft perhaps, maybe even by October ninth, at least put it in the packet perhaps for, for your view and then continue. And maybe this could be October work session and then we could think about maybe October planning board, something like this to get their input and bring this back, you know, that would, we're already talking about November then. But to keep this moving, that could be a potential. Okay.
Perfect.
So with that, I think we can move forward to, I think one that's been anticipated for a while, the main street corridor. Staff has done some mapping of the general commercial zoning districts, which is basically the non-residential zoning that the town has on, on the ground, so to speak. So this first map is the, is the whole thing, the next three maps are sub groupings of this. If that makes sense, I'll get through it. So this is all of the general commercial, general commercial conditional zoning, GCCZ, and those districts that still appear under the UDO's RNPUD district because that district was not translated from the UDO to the LDO. For example, the multiple commercial buildings on Rogers Road with Pizza Hut and so forth, those let, still show as RNPUD because there was no conversion to a commercial district under the land development, in, in a clear pattern. I think we have identified twenty-seven or twenty-eight individual properties. Also in your packet is that spreadsheet. Have it somewhere here, two, two tables worth. Again, the number key is on the left-hand side, which goes to each one of these maps. So it's got the PIN number, it's got a property address, it's got the zoning description. So that was our first blush at putting the information about all of the twenty-eight or so properties into a table form so that you could see where they are and what they are. And then if you want to ask about a particular address point or number, because again, you can see it on the map, hey, what, number eight? See number eight is, you know, one, two, three Smith, tell us that and then we can dive deeper into that property zone. Second map, so this is the proper, this is the list of the properties that are what we call straight GC, meaning there's not a known conditional zoning ordinance that rides with this property. This would have been, under the UDO, the, the conversion of the commercial outline or CO zoning districts that got converted to GC general commercial. This is about half of them, it looks like, the table on the left there. So again, there's property addresses and some names, if, if the property or project has a name, to represent what those are. And those are the ones highlighted in pink, yeah. The, the little box table is highlighted in pink. Sorry, the numbered boxes. Then this one, these were those conditional, commercial outlining, special use districts under the UDO that were converted to general commercial conditional zoning districts. When that text amendment came about in 2021, when state law changed that special use districts were not permitted anymore. And so these were converted to CZ, conditional zoning. And, and then with the LDO adoption, the CO, the commercial outline became general commercial. That's landed us at these properties that are GCCZ. These are the ones that we have to investigate periodically when folks call us and say, what's the zoning of this property? And sometimes we, we write zoning verification letters, we investigate and we, we send letters confirming what the zoning is. And these are ones that we found that don't have a real set of zoning conditions of approval. Meaning that property didn't go through the board of commissioners, vetted, rezoned with a list of conditions. So these properties do not have a list of conditions, even though they represent on the zoning map as CZ. The CZ was simply the conversion of SUD to CZ. But these are essentially by right, commercial, general commercial zoning districts.
Mike, would the special use districts, at the time of their approval by the board as QJ matters, would they have been given conditions of approval?
If it's a developed property, potentially.
I'm sorry, will you say that again, I was writing notes.
So before Roseville had conditional zoning, the town would use a two-step process of zoning and special use permit. The way the statute treated that in 2021 is that those circumstances were converted. And so if you had these special use districts, the conditions that were on the special use permit become zoning conditions running with the land for those places.
Okay.
Mike and, before Mike, Meredith and I have had discussions over the years that in some cases, the record is not complete in the town's records for things that are twenty, thirty years old. So that is a question mark. And then there are other cases where it is, it seems that the conditions were said at the meeting and maybe made it or maybe did not make it into the minutes. And the property may have been developed in accordance with the agreement that happened in the room. It wasn't in this room at that time, but there's nothing in the planning department's files like you would have today with an order and an ordinance. So some of these, some of these end up where Mike is saying, look, even though it's a special use district that was approved as part of a special use permit, and you would think there'd be conditions, some of those conditions may have been lost to time. So the effect is, if we can't prove there's a condition, there's nothing to enforce. And these have essentially reverted to essentially being close to being general condition, general commercial with no real conditions. So that's, that's the long way of saying how you end up here. Some of them have conditions, they were written down, they're on the side of the plat, those are great. It's very easy to say that those are the zoning conditions now, but others, we feel confident that there were conditions because it got built in a certain way, but they're, they're no longer, they're not in writing in any way that's easily accessible.
So does this map reflect which ones those are?
Mike, I mean, do they run the gamut?
So this, this particular map with the yellow callouts is to identify the ones that we've figured out or found to be those that converted from COSUT, SUD to GCCZ. I believe the intent of this express map is that we found that there are no conditions related to it. I've used the term hollow before to describe because COSUD for a vacant piece of property meant when it does develop, the site plan or the preliminary plat would have to come through the board under a special use permit process. That's the special use kicker that, that would have been required and it never made that far.
They never made it that far to get the conditions of the special use permit. So now they are effectively just hollow or they are straight, we call general use, general commercial. They're, they're not conditioned.
What I'm going to do, I'm going to, one by one, go through and determine are these developed lots or undeveloped lots? If they're undeveloped, it would never have gone through an SUD process before the board under a quasi judicial hearing for an SUP to develop according to said plan that they presented. So in that case, it's hollow. Now, if it did develop, if it went through that process, there were, very well could be a set of conditions of approval that got to the point of how they developed the property. And then the question would be, do those, do those conditions run with the land? I think the answer is yes, even though that property was developed. Somebody comes and raises the property down, but those conditions from a long time ago still said it had to be one story.
Right.
Does that still run with the land? I, I, the nod is yes. So then that person would be in the particular, let's say they wanted to build a two-story building.
So they'll be coming to you for a rezoning now, not for a special use permit?
That's right, because the conditions from the past, even if the site was built once, now it's been demolished, still can't live or it doesn't work for my, my scheme, I'm just going to come through for the board and rezone it and bring it into modern times and then, as we know how that works, to rezone to a LDO done in condition.
So now, part of the daunting task is to figure out which one of the, which ones of those are general condition per se, because they.
If, if they're hollow or not, if the SUD was never exercised on that property equating to a set of conditions that mayor may have, and honestly, properties can be entitled, right? And they're never built, they lose the funding and they never built it, but there could be a set of conditions. The intent of this map was to show those that we felt were hollow, but I'm going to double check every single property because that's a very.
So, so which is to say, they are only restricted as the LDO restricts general commercial district?
Okay.
That's, that's the simple way to think of it, it's straight, general commercial.
Okay.
Part of this goes back to way back in the past under the UDO, not every property zone, something commercial, was an SUD. But a bunch were, and so those translated differently. Plus again, when that state law changed in 2021, that you couldn't have SUDs as a inherent process of development. It changed. So we, we had the LDO change or adoption and change and naming of the core districts, but then we also had the abolishment of SUDs and the town chose to call them CZs instead. Because that was what the town was going towards with the LDO. It all happened at the very same time, different actions technically, there's a, there was a UDO text amendment that converted SUDs to CZs right about the same time the LDO was coming through and renaming all the districts.
And that was to get the board out of the trap of a quasi judicial, this was 2020. So the board quite often would feel trapped and the mayor can, can hopefully confirm that I have this memory right. The board would have a legislative zoning, but then would convert into a special use permit structure, which is supposed to be evidentiary and therefore the conditions would only be appropriate if the condition was necessary to meet one of the findings of fact, rather than being able to exercise legislative judgment. So by moving it all into CZ, it became legislative.
I'm going to move to the third map, and again, we can come back any, and ask questions. This is the smallest portion, these are those properties that still, because RNPUD was not easily converted to a, an LDO zoning district, have commercial entitlement or have been developed as commercial. And this is one's a little easier, again, I think it's twenty, twenty-eight is those Roger Road, Rogers Road properties. Let's see, where is the, the Food Line Shopping Center, is that, okay, that's the largest blue one, twenty-seven. So that's the Food Line Shopping Center with all the businesses and so forth that we know there. And then twenty-six, further down Main Street.
Storage.
You might be right, it might be.
The storage max.
The storage max, yes, yes. So again, those are, I think the good thing is they're all developed, but again, that also means they could be easily redeveloped in the future or near term. So those are ones that, again, because of that uniqueness of the RNPUD not being converted with the LDO, we call, we're calling them out separately. But for all intents and purposes, they get regulated from a use perspective, permitted use perspective similarly to GC. But that's a wrinkle that I think the town has to eventually cover. Because those Roger Road buildings, new tenants coming and going, you know, somewhat frequently, and we'd hate to get in the pickle. Basically, if you're a service or a retail or even an office, small office type use, you can attain a change of tenant form and move into those spaces and we've seen that occur. So right now, there's not a problem with that, but having these harbingers to the RNPUD of the UDO is, is not a good, it's not a good long-term thing, in my opinion, it's something I'd like to solve in the future. So that's the four maps, again, the everything in one, that segment of straight general commercial zoning, then that grouping of converted, but we feel the CZ today is really hollow, it doesn't have a set of conditions saying these, these uses are permitted, these are not height, maximum parking, et cetera. And then those that go back to, to the RNPUD. So with, with this mapping done, we can start to answer some of those questions. If you say, what, what, what properties of these twenty-eight can X use go? We can do the analysis and tell you where those are permitted and where they're not permitted. Some of these properties, again, especially in the era of the LDO, did conditional zoning, right? And some of those came forth with a prohibited list of uses, saying I won't do these uses. So if you ask us where can, I'll just use the one that's usually nixed out vape shops. Where can a vape shop go? Well, I could tell you absolutely which properties put that on the prohibited list, so it can't go there. If it's a by right general commercial zoning district without a cassette of conditions, then vape shop would be permitted. So we can, you can whittle down these things. Then again, you can compare it to some reality, oh, that property is food line. And I don't really need to worry about vape shop going in food line, for instance, or something of that nature, you know, parties. But again, uses don't change, don't last forever, uses turn over quite frequently. Size of property is another factor. So again, if you're vetting this self-storage enclosed, which we'll get to next, it's our last item, there's a nucleus of. There's a nucleus of property that's needed to perform that type of use, both for the size of building, that's marketable, parking, et cetera, buffers, et cetera. So by looking at zone properties, if they're under a certain threshold of size, we could probably make a good estimation that that use is impossible to develop unto itself. Which again, we'll start to answer the questions, where could this use go under zoning of today? Either by use restrictions, size, et cetera. If it's developed or not, would play into it, obviously. If it's a vacant piece of property, it's a little more right to develop than a existing developed, developed property. So some, those are all kinds of the factors that go into vetting the probability, the likelihood of any particular use going anywhere. And again, we could do this with all 45 or whatever, commercial uses that are basically out there.
Mike, got a question for you, sir. By everything that you had displayed with all four maps, what do you see that can be a change that you would like to see that can be effective?
Honestly, I think looking at the permitted uses and the text amendment on the, on self-storage is actually one of them. There's some uses that aren't expressed well enough or maybe have enough use standards to hem them in to make sure that what gets built and delivered is what the town wants versus the worst case scenario, meaning if I saw that in another town, if somebody did that use in another town, but man, I wish they would have put a better buffer against that neighborhood behind it. Well, we have the ability to add those use standards that get us the deliverable that we want versus leaving it to either the standards in the regulation or just the omission of a regulation. That's the biggest thing. But right now, some of the uses like self-storage enclosed, you have to, that's a light industrial use and you have to have general industrial zoning to do it. And there's about a speck of that zoning on the ground today in this town. So this town has basically wiped that use off the permitted use list without deliberately doing it per se. It's just really, really, really hard to get to that end product today. There's another use vehicle minor service that we talked about recently. That use maybe is a little too liberally permitted on some properties. It maybe doesn't have the use restrictions that would give the board and the town the deliverable product that it wants. Like no bay doors visible from a public street. If that's the way the town wants it, you write the ordinance that says you could do the use, but you got to have it look this way or orient this way or not do this or not do that. Proximity to residential districts, residential homes, whatever. Build in the protections that the town wants for its, for its interests, but allow, you know, economics to happen. If that use is a use that wants to come to a community of 20,000 people or 15,000 people, that's economic development, what you can do it the right way versus just saying no, nixing it out. That's, that's, that's a comprehensive look at the, at the, of the permitted use charts, those tables with the districts along top and the uses down here. And kind of seeing where could we massage these to be maybe a little more open, but get what we want at the end. With the down zoning now, you know, we'd have to be very particular about how we write use standards to make sure that we're not being too restrictive. But I think if you're opening it up to maybe other zoning districts, making it a permitted use where maybe it's a, it's a dash, which means prohibited. Maybe adding as a permit, permitted gets us over the down zoning.
Unfortunately, no. So there's no trade-off mechanism in the statute. What we, what we may be able to do and what I would suggest that the town do until someone challenges this in court is that if, if, if the town wishes to adopt development standards for certain uses that are permitted, because we can't make them prohibited or special uses if they're currently permitted. But we bulk up the ordinance to make sure that there are no unintended consequences or externalities of those permitted uses. The language of the text amendment needs to make clear that it does not apply to any developed lot to the extent that it would create a non-conformity for that lot. So, because that's in the statute. So you cannot add any development standards that create non-conformities to non-residential lots. And I think everybody's up to speed on non-conforming use. So as long as, as long as you're in your ordinance are exempting the previously developed property that would have the non-conformity created by the text change, arguably you have not violated the statute. I think that's a fair reading of it.
He said, as long as we're exempting the previously developed property that has the, what was it?
That if you have an existing use, so let's say we currently have a general commercial self-storage facility that is developed.
Yes.
And let's say the town is determined in his wisdom that the development standards that have been used there are not appropriate and not the vision that the town has going forward. So we want to make sure that future self-storage that is developed in the town looks a different way.
Yes.
So the setbacks would be greater, for example. That would not apply to the existing lot.
Right.
The existing lot could be torn down. It would just not, it just, the, the law, it wouldn't be a non-conformity. It would never apply to that lot.
Right, 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 right.
Which is a weird situation. It's not, it's not the way it is in any other state. But that's where we are right now until things get challenged in court.
Okay, I got that one.
Mr. Attorney, if we don't have a use built or developed in this town that's in the use chart, are we free to change the standards?
If you, if you were to add a new use that isn't currently in, you would not be reducing the number of uses and you can write anything you want because it, it doesn't, it doesn't exist as an existing use and it doesn't exist in the L D O. So you're, you know, if there's some new private space launch use that we don't currently have, I suppose you could launch pad, we don't have that. So you could just write it however you want because you, you're only adding to permitted uses.
That's an analysis planning would have to do to see if any of our uses actually aren't.
And you would also need to do the analysis that, that there's a court case that unless your ordinance says that anything not listed is prohibited, then the presumption is that anything not listed is permitted. And the, you have to make reasonable interpretation as to the, the, the most analogous permitted use. So you, you really would have to have something truly exotic. Remember when the, when the electronic gaming came in? There really wasn't a comparable when that hit the state of North Carolina. Everyone thought that was electronic entertainment with skill games and games of chance. When those all came in and became a real concern, everyone created a new permitted use for that. But the industry made the argument that it was retail. So you're, you're going to end up with fights. Now hopefully we get some legislative relief to all of this. Cause it's, it's not workable.
So what's the next step on this?
I think it's hearing from the board again, like one use by use. And we already know that it's desired to look at self-storage enclosed, the new use that we're talking about through the text amendment. Where, which of these properties it could be performed on. So we know we're doing that one already. It becomes now just an exercise of whatever the board would like to vet and look into. You know, it might come with every text amendment or maybe every land development that comes through, sorry, like rezoning. What, where is that use permitted? These maps are meant to be more of a tool. And the final, the final piece of the puzzle is on the properties that do have a honest to goodness conditional zoning with a list of conditions and even a concept plan, maybe to, to align that with this data, with the maps to show this is what those properties are regulated on. And then that becomes a massive resource for all of us.
Yeah.
And the public, it is part of our due diligence and it's what, what staff, planning staff would use as a basis to start zoning verification letters when we get an ask for that for a particular property. So all this research has been very fruitful for town staff, I can tell you that. And then hopefully it also starts to inform the board and the public where the commercial zoning is. And again, this is just G C. There are other non-residential zoning districts in the L D O, but the pieces of land that have that zoning are very, very, very few. Again, we've got a very few pieces of general industrial and just a few others off the O P district. We have one or two tracks of that. And then the other ones simply don't exist on actual properties. Nobody's rezoned to them. So yeah, so those are kind of the future outcomes of this is just using this as a tool and an analysis tool as the board makes decisions or contemplates other L D O text amendments as we again can under the state law that we're under right now, things of that nature. That's the next steps. There's no action that being asked of the board though, if that's kind of a big question here.
I appreciate you putting these maps together and I know it was a big ask. But I, I, I think that it is desperately needed for us to be able to make the decisions that I feel are, that we feel are the best for the town moving forward since our space is so limited and so valuable.
Staff agree. Again, these are beneficial outcomes for all.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right. Well, then we can move to our last item and hopefully get through this real quick. Again, this is a, something that staff did just to keep chugging on this text amendment 2506 about the self-storage enclosed use. So updated there is what the use table would look like with this inserted as a new use permitted in those six districts. As you see, G C, C H, O P, G I, B T and, and C. And then what would come in the far right column, 5.1.4, we create a new entry alphabetically, whatever this one that would be, end up being of these use standards. One, two, three, we're definitely in your, in your packet last time when this is brought forward. Four is really the, again, as it says, use standards throughout there. Again, building architecture will comply with section 6.8.2. If you remember, the applicant said, we'll make it look like an office building. Well, that's very difficult to administer. Administering the code as written is just the easier way. So that's what we're suggesting for four A. Call, we talked about transparency and maybe there's a desire to actually not see through the transparent building materials. And to take a step back, transparency is to avert blank walls, right? And to just not have a building without windows or glazing or anything like that. It would be hard building materials. Even with, even with depth or, or vertical separation of materials to make it look a little more interesting, almost, you know, simulate floors in a building. Well, this type of building, it has floors in it, but they're not visible from the exterior. It's not like an office building. It's not like a residential building. It's not like any other type of building. It's very purpose driven. But the town has transparency requirements. So then how does the developer apply transparency to this? Again, for this particular use, the board sees the desire to not have as much transparency. That's great. We just need to know the number. Also then C gets at, okay, the transparency or the opacity of that glazing or that, the, the the material, the window material. Again, it can be the material, but it doesn't mean you have to see what's on the inside. And that was discussed at the last meeting. So if the board likes the idea of, you know, 80% opacity, so you maybe see a little bit of what's going on in there, but not everything. You know, tint levels, we can, I think we can get inventive as to how to get the purpose of various building materials. So the building looks a little more interesting and less block-like, but also get to the point of nobody wants to see the inside of a building. And people walking through hallways and opening up doors to their leased rental spaces on the inside of that. So, and again, we can go and think about other, other topics here. Add more use standards if that's the desire of the board to regulate this down. We can get into things like building separation from property lines or from other buildings. There's already building setbacks and things of that nature, which are dictated by the zoning district. And each one of those six zoning districts might have a different building setback. That's already baked into, you know, the development. But for this particular use, if you want to say a self-storage building enclosed will be at least 50 feet from the property line with any residential zoning district. Then that would be an extra standard that this use would have to comply with. So let's say the building setback was 20 foot and the buffer was 25. So that means technically they put that building at 25 feet from the property line. Cause they've met their two other requirements, building setback and buffer yard. But for this particular use, the board would say, nope, it's going to be 50 foot back regardless, regardless of what the other standards are. So it'd be a more restrictive place, building location. So those are the types of what ifs. What I thought I could do for the next meeting is again, like I did with signs, go out and take some pictures of some built projects. Now, I'm not going to be able to necessarily analyze each one to its, to the regulations of that community. Cause I'm going to have to go outside the community, obviously to do this. So I can't tell you exactly how far from its setback requirement it is, but just from, I think the, how it's oriented in the, in the development where it is, whether it's a standalone. I know there's several examples of where these are built into kind of shopping centers and things of that nature. You know, how they relate to other uses, maybe on private property uses as opposed to exterior properties like adjacent to roadways. So all of those things, I think pictures can tell a thousand words. So that's my, my hope to, to get some pictures and examples to show you all. And then you can react to that.
Thank you. Much needed.
Yeah. And, and finally, the direction from the board at the last meeting was for the applicant to also work on this language. So this is what staff's come up with in the last two weeks. We're certainly going to be working with the applicant, see what they have to come up with. Again, they're proposing things, we're proposing things, we can mesh it all together, we can add more. And ultimately it's the board's decision whether, how, how they want to set this use up for regulation.
So self-storage enclosed will have a separate section.
Would be a standalone use right there on the left. Yeah. Cause right now, if you want to do self-storage, you go to industrial light and you read the standards in there and self-storage is one of those examples. It says examples of light industrial self-storage.
So self-storage, non-enclosed is only ended industrials zoning? So it has been, it has to be.
That's right. That's where you can do that prototypical exterior, non-conditioned, all the garage doors, all the man doors, et cetera. They could face a right of way, all of those things.
But one across the road would have to be industrial today. If they come in.
That's right. There, there's two examples in town. In order to do that fresh today in 2025, you'd have to, the use would be called industrial light. And you would need general industrial.
So, so what about self-storage? And I think, I think could be some interest in this at some point in time. Maybe a self-storage that has no buildings. Is your self.
Storage?
Huh?
So outdoor.
Outdoor storage.
Outdoor storage.
But what does that mean?
I don't know, campers, boats, things that, you know. I mean, it's, it's one back here, but it's kind of in with this self-storage.
In my experience, that comes part and parcel with the quote, traditional unconditioned garage door, individual access unit type, et cetera. Self-storage enclosed is inherently an enclosed building where you don't see that. But I can see the potential need to add a use standard shall not be any exterior storage of.
So to do one like next door, I think about half of the property is, you know, you know, we, we park our police cars over there. You know, used to anyway. I'm not sure we still do or not. But you have to have at least one building in there to do that? Is that the requirement?
I would have to look at the, the description. I don't believe under light industrial where it says an example of self-storage. It gives any stipulation as to how you build it. It was very open-ended.
Gotcha.
So at that point in time, and I do believe that that use carried over from the U D O, if self-storage meant, again, I hate to, I hate to say the ones in our town because that sounds negative. They're fine businesses. They are what they are. That's what you could build. And that's what the industry was. The industry morphed into a different type for different clientele, different needs, different wants into multi-story conditioned spaces, et cetera, privacy, privacy and security, et cetera. But they're different animals, right? You don't just walk up and open your trunk and go in and out of your suite. You go into a building, you use elevators, et cetera. So it's just a different form of it. Which didn't potentially exist, at least in markets like, like Rollsville a decade ago, maybe when, when self-storage was.
So we're not, we're just doing a, a new comprehensive language plan. So in there, does it have, if, if it's just industrial, do we have industrial locations? It's going to be defined in our comprehensive language. In other words, if, if somebody wanted to do a self-storage, if there's no industrial sites, then what, what do you have to ask for a zoning change?
Ask for rezoning. Yeah. The comprehensive plan is a little more broader as, as not just, I don't even know the word industrial is one of those land use categories. It's, yeah, I think it's business technology, business community, maybe. Again, they're, they're policy words. They're not zoning district words. And unfortunately, sometimes they're the same, like in our current complaint and our current L D O, they're the same verbiage, but they're really not supposed to be. Yeah. So that would lay the groundwork. Again, if there's an area that's business and commerce, let's call it that. And somebody wants to do traditional older school storage, self-storage, that's an industrial light. They would have to get that property done to general industrial to do.
Cause to get back on topic, I think that was the thing with Main Street is you know, self-storage in my, on Main Street. I guess could have went in commercial in the past, right? So today.
Well, no. Today, today and years past, self-storage was industrial light, and it needed industrial zoning. That's everything that I've seen. I can't explain the zoning situations of the past and how the, the two businesses in town were zoned.
But the two we got on Main Street is not industrial zoning, is it?
Not today. That's, I don't believe our analysis.
You were saying in our previous plans for, since then, okay, I got you.
Whatever point they developed, however they got permitted, and then when you look at today's zoning map, I do not believe it says general. We can double-check that for sure. But my understanding is they're, they're general commercial of some iteration. Remember the maps? There could be various iterations of how it came to be general commercial from the U D O translation or before. Maybe it was a conditional zoning under C O from a long time ago that the board permitted that one use.
So if a self-storage on Main Street today and also in the future, it's only the few sites on Main Street that's industrial. Is that right?
There are very few, and it's, it's fewer acres than I have fingers, I believe. So it's, yeah, it's extremely limited. The size of each lot, yeah, it's basically an on currents. But that's one reason maybe the board wants to entertain. The new iteration, the new version of storage is an interior building that can look like an office building, that is a retail use for a lot of people. It's not an industrial use for a lot of people. It's part of their daily lives, part of residential life. And of course, we're highly residential community. So whether it's located on Main Street, I think it should be more about the, the building type, the look, the impacts, the low on traffic, because it may be Saturday morning. They pay lots of taxes, so they're good economic development. They, they screen, and the board right now, at your fingertips, you can put up use standards that protect the unintended consequences to ensure better development of these types of uses. Because I really don't see the board probably rezoning properties to general industrial when somebody says, I want to do a hundred, a three-hundred roll-up door self-storage use.
Right.
Probably not in the town's future. So I don't see that being.
On Main Street, they can only go in those few little industrial sites if, if chose to.
Yeah.
But with this new one, I just want to make sure, you know, people watching understand, because some people are concerned about this. In this new one, if it's enclosed, then it can go on Main Street in commercial.
Well, that's what they're proposing. But then my question is, can they only go in those hollow ones at this point? Based on what, what we just heard?
They can go in any place where they are not currently not allowed. So, so every C G district that is general, every C G district that is general, and every C G district that has a list of conditions that doesn't include a prohibition upon, let's say, light industrial uses, we might say, yeah, maybe not, or a prohibition on retail uses, which I doubt exists. It's hard to find a prohibition on a use that at the time the drafters wrote it didn't exist, because the time machines are pretty uncommon. But some of our conditions are written in their other way. They're writing, they're written in the permitted. So the condition is that the property shall be limited to the retail use. Well, then, then we know that by adding this, that doesn't make that available to that particular C G spot. The caution that I gave a couple of weeks ago is, given the language of the statute, where you're no longer allowed to remove permitted uses, remember this is a one-time thing.
Yep.
So if you allow it, you won't be able to reconsider it in the future. It's, it's allowed forever. And the other thing is that you can do these as special use permits rather than as permitted uses in those districts where, depending upon where it's located. For example, if you add a new use called self-storage enclosed, you could have it available in the Main Street corridor, which is already defined, but it would be a special use permit there rather than a permitted use there. You could do that. But you can't go back.
So if, if there's no zoning on, if it's just, I guess, you know, outside of town, and some inside of town just has the regular zoning of forty, you know.
R L.
Yeah.
Residential law.
We haven't, we haven't applied a zone to it, you know. It's whatever the default is.
So, so everything has a zoning district. So R L seems to be a lot of what we've got out at the edges.
That's right. And most counties are L, most counties.
Yeah, they're R forty thing.
So if somebody coming in want to do a, a self-storage enclosed, they would, they, it doesn't matter what they apply to, they just have to apply to whichever one fits the category. In other words, we are, you know, by having, you know, what has you got, G C?
Highway commercial.
So you, you got one, two, three, four, five, six different locations. So it really is saying all the, all those locations that exist today have, will have the right to do that.
That's the purpose of the maps.
Right.
Drill down to exactly which properties might have to get it. There's a prohibited, et cetera. It'll dwindle down to a certain ones. Then you can vet things like, is it already developed? Well, its likelihood is lower, not impossible, but lower, right?
Yeah.
The size of the lot, again, if we figure out it takes at least two acres to do a marketable this use, then all properties under two acres have a lower probability to end up with it. Other things, you have access and visibility. You know, there, there's determiners that we could look at to analyze properties. And before we know it, we're probably down to a very small numbers, and that's where. And then maybe that's how you build the use standard. You go, okay, here's all the properties that today, this thing would come in as a buy-right use, and it would go straight to site plan, and Mike and the T R C would review it and have to approve. Let's make sure that it's fifty feet from a residential property. Let's make sure it's this. Let's make sure it's that. Let's make sure the transparency is dark enough, so I don't see the doors and the people at night. Things of that nature. So you get to craft it.
Right. So, so I think, and I think David would talk about this before, and I believe, I believe, I understand you say that we don't. In, in words, if we, if we took, if we took the new thing, self-storage enclosed, it said it could only be industrial like the regular one is.
Okay.
Right? Like the regular one is. You, you said the regular self-storage can only go industrial.
Yeah.
If we did that, then someone on Main Street that has a general commercial, they would have to come to us and ask for a zoning change?
Correct.
And we can't, I was thinking you were saying they already has investor rights to it because we can't downzone it, but that's not downzoning then.
It's not downzoning because it didn't, it doesn't exist. We don't, we don't have that yet. So they can't do it today, so we're not, if we're not taking it away from anyone, then we haven't downzoned it.
Like it is, we would be taken away if we wanted change in the future. If we just put, if, in other words, if we just put industrial.
If today, you, let's say today you only did industrial, you could always add more. You could always add more districts where it's allowed.
You can't take more.
But if you did, but if you did the way it's proposed here, and then a year from now, you determine that it didn't really make sense in a planned neighborhood commercial district, you wouldn't be able to take it out.
But anybody, this really most sites that these places go, like I, I think there's one on, on West, on Wade Avenue or something, what's Wade, what is it? Yeah, you know, that's not, that's just G L or, or whatever, right? So they, they're going to have to ask for zoning anyway, right?
The one on Jones Dairy by Jones Dairy Elementary came through. It was an annexation and a rezoning. You recall, it was county industrial zoning, but they couldn't get water and sewer for them, because you're in the U T J. So they had to annex, and then they had to ask the board for general industrial zoning. It was granted as a conditioned zoning, so they had stipulations, I forget what they were, but there were. But the zoning change was really from county industrial to town industrial with the known project, et cetera. So that's a, that's a rare bird, that, that a property under county zoning of industrial sought to annex into the town, basically for water and sewer from City of Raleigh, which is always the game. And the town granted a general industrial. That's a, I'd say that's a unicorn right there. You probably will not be presented with another situation like that.
I think, I think a lot of these, these places follow neighborhoods. So wherever the neighborhood is going, the next thing comes is a storage thing, because.
Yeah, if you, just, just, just Jones Dairy and Wade Avenue, there's, ours would, our centennial would be the third one.
So I, I think, I think, I think Rolls-A-Roe would be the next place out, close to high school, which will have to be some storage places out there. And a lot of that's going to be county property.
Yeah.
Would have to be annexed.
Right.
So, um, so I don't know. It's up to the board, but I think, I think the attorney is telling us, if we go that route, we'll, we'll be in, unless, unless the legislature changed the, the thing, we'll be, you know, you won't be able to go back. You can't go the other way, but you can't go back.
But we can do a special use right, Dave.
Right, you don't have to do all P. You could make some of those Ss if you wanted to. I mean, you're just creating another, if, if you make a P, this board will never see it. If it's an S, then the board of adjustment will see it. And if it's, and if it's not permitted on their, on their property, then they're going to come in for a rezoning case to you to move it into one of the boxes that has a P in it. I mean, that's the way that works. You know, the, the theory of the zoning ordinance is that you have Ps and Ss in all the places where you're not worried about someone just doing that through the staff, because it's safe, because you've written your standards in such a way that you're comfortable with it. If we're comfortable with those standards, in theory, every current C G, general, any G C, every current G C site that doesn't have a restriction could become enclosed self-storage. We know that the market's not going to cover us with enclosed self-storage, but that could happen. I mean, that, it would legally be allowed.
I, I think where people get upset is when they're side by side.
They do, and they get, and you could, you could have a radius requirement in your self-storage standards if you were to do that. I, I have heard from folks in Roseville who are concerned that, for some reason, Roseville has too many car washes. I, I have no idea. Maybe Rosevillians have more cars than everyone else, or we just really don't like to wash cars. I don't know if it's even true, but there's a feeling.
Dentist offices too, I hear that a lot.
What is it?
Bad teeth. People got bad teeth.
Oh, we, a lot of dentist offices and car washes. I don't know how those go together. But you, there's a certain faith in the ordinance that the market is doing some stuff that we don't see, right? You're not going to get, all the G C isn't going to become an enclosed self-storage somehow. But if that's a concern, you can do, you can do separation things. I just, I worry about the kind of blind radius, and you don't really, it's kind of an unintended consequence kind of situation. I don't know.
Well, well, Mike, you did a great job on this. Really good explaining and great job, really do. I think the board, you have to decide. I, I think, I think if we go with that, we could, we could have some Main Street people question us. Because we're really opening it up.
Mind the board, this is coming back on October ninth. The applicant is doing some legwork as well. We'll, staff and the applicant will again come up with a better, more, you know, a newer, strike-through version, et cetera. And I will have some pictures to also exemplify what this looks like in other communities.
So I thi, I think, you know, you can, you can come back to us. I, I think, I don't know, I hadn't heard much from Michael Paul, but I think basically, basically, I think a lot of people leaning towards keeping it just eye-like, the regular storage thing. So you may need to find out what impact that is. I'm not sure. So, you know, let us know what impact that would be.
I would say, and we looked at the attorney to make sure I'm saying this correctly. As written, if somebody has industrial zoning or should get it through a rezoning to the board, industrial light's a buy-right use there. They could do an enclosed self-storage if they chose to. Because again, there's no parameter that says self-storage has to be roll-up doors, exterior, et cetera. It's very silent to all of that. This use is very specific to being enclosed and not being a roll-up doors.
Yeah, I think that's right.
I, I think we could, we could do a way.
I think that's probably the interpretation.
Just deny this text amendment and live off what you've got. And if the market brings enclosed self-storage through an, a general industrial zoning district, which again, we've got a miniscule amount, we'll get you those numbers and exactly. But then somebody would come forth with a rezoning conditional, say, I need, I need G I zoning. I want to do this enclosed self-storage. Here's my picture. Here's my commitments. I'll exceed thresholds for setbacks and this and that and the other thing. And the board can contemplate that very specific project case by case. And if that's the way that the board wants to take, take on this modern use, then that's.
Can you do that without losing all the work y'all put into this?
No, all the work is pretty much gone, unless the board wishes to simply add some use standards under the existing light industrial, self-storage shall do this, 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 when enclosed. Let's say that. I mean, that's another, that's a completely different text amendment to amend light industrial self-storage there. But now I think we've walked into non-conformities, because we do have two of those uses on the ground in the town. And so we can't prohibit that, but we can add some standards if you do enclosed, we would like this to occur. But I can tell you, it would already have to follow six point eight point two. Transparency would be what it is, but again, I think we could set, okay, we want it actually to be non-see-through transparency, as opposed to see-through, and things of that nature. So it'd be a very smaller text amendment, completely different than what this is attempting to do. But if that's the outcome of this entire conversation, then that's, that's great.
And I don't think that if that is the outcome, or if it's a different outcome, I don't think that the work that they've done is of no use.
It's just not, this work will be what's adopted.
It's not this one, but it's still very valuable information that I think we will use going forward for anybody that wants to come to Main Street.
Yeah, I think, I think though, I, I, I think the biggest thing that came up in this whole discussion we've had the last couple of times is the transparency thing. And, and you know, we, you know, I hate to lose that, because I think the board is pretty much good with transparency, but, you know, got to come up to a percentage, but not sure what that is.
We could do that in the context of a zoning change for general commercial with conditional zoning. And we have a lot more leverage to be able to, you know, establish what those criteria would be for any self-storage. I think we give up a lot with the text amendment, because once we set it in stone, like our attorney said, we're stuck with it. This way, we still have some flexibility to say yea or nay on a case-by-case basis.
Is the concern solely the Main Street area?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So there's not, you, you're writing it now, so there's nothing to stop you from making it G C except in Doverly. Like you haven't taken anything at that point, because G C currently doesn't allow any kind of self-storage. Now you would have, G C allows self, enclosed self-storage, only enclosed, developed in accordance with the standards that the board has adopted, except to the extent the property is situated within the corridor. Then you've created, that would be more of a planning structure that we would have used before the downzoning restrictions. So if you're trying to explain to a legislature why this isn't good, the game theory of this is exactly where the board is right now. Well, we should just not make anything permitted anywhere, so everyone has to come here for an ad hoc decision. I think that's the unintended consequence of the language of the statute, because that's, and we didn't write the rules, right? The challenge is going to be, now the board, when it receives the industrial rezoning case, is going to have to redo and remember all of the thoughts as to the standards you want to have as conditions when you get each one of these weird new uses, because they're not going to be written anywhere. Right?
Michael will have them for us.
He's just going to recall them, right?
I think, you, you evaluate that, Mike, and see, because I, I think, I think you could do, I think you mentioned it, I think I understood what you said. You could just add to what we have today, a little, a little, a little, I guess, subcategory for enclosed, and then have some of the things that we kind of agreed on in there, and then, then, then in the future, you got to cover. Rather than do a whole text amendment and creating a new use, you know, just add it in there, a little, some, you know, enclosed thing.
We could do that in parallel, or so I can sort of remind you that this text amendment is an applicant-initiated. And if you see, I'm like, I'm running my cursor here. This is really the reason why they're pushing this. They have a rezoning for neighborhood commercial zoning, and they want it to be a permitted use, because that's what they want to develop, along with the residential. It's part of their scheme, and that's no secret. It's out there in the rezoning petition. So this is part of paving the way for the project. So this is part of paving the way for the project that they want to do. If the board denies this, this particular text amendment and asks, okay, now go back to the drawing board, amend the light industrial use to flesh out and add some of these use standards we, we saw in this text amendment, apply it there, but the use is still gonna be light industrial and only permitted in GI. This applicant will be done with at least their attempt to develop that in an NC zoning district. Now, that's, they're elected and it's your prerogative to approve or deny that. But just, just to, so you understand that that's, that is what's, why this is being brought forth. They really, again, based on the project that they've applied for zoning for, they really only are doing it so that it's permitted use in NC. The other ones make sense because they're a lot lesser and they are non-residential zoning districts. It makes sense there. They wanted it in NC.
Mike, did it ever make sense in NC if it's not in AC and TC, which are far more intense uses?
I can't speak for the applicant, but.
Well, this is the staff's presentation, right, so.
Standalone uses in those two, then TC and AC, I would see no issue with that, especially with use standards and if it came forth. Because we all know, there's no mixed-use district sitting on the ground today. Everyone's gonna come through the board as a conditional zoning because that's how the board appreciates rezonings to be asked for. As a conditional, you will see the project and uses as big as a self-storage enclosed would surely be noted. Or you would ask, are you going to do any of that? Please stipulate that as a permitted use. And where is it going? And so there will be some levels of control and knowledge from the board if this were a P use in TC or AC.
Yeah, if the board just goes with industrial, you're going to get a resubmission of the application and it's going to be a rezoning application for RH and I. And that'll.
In GI, in the little area that they want to do.
It'll be GI on a little spot and the rest will just be RH. And it won't be, it won't be under the NC mixed thing.
Again, the board will know exactly where that use would go. They would have these new, let's say these use standards right here on the screen, plus some other ones. Those are the protections or the making sure that it ends up being what we like it to be. And again, maybe then approving GI zoning on a particular property as part of a multifaceted rezoning project is what the board likes. Because again, you would know exactly what you're getting. As opposed to working this way and making it a buy-right use. Where anybody who attains those zonings, and again, some of these zonings, they don't exist on the ground, so they would always come through the board. But like we said, back to the GC, there's some properties out there that are zone GC. Somebody could pull the trigger on this use if approved, straight to site plan, administrative, the board, as Mr. Neal said, the board with them. So that's the, how do you want to do this? Again, this might put the board in the position of actually approving future general industrial zoning, which there's been a movement to get rid of general industrial zoning. Now mainly on the Main Street corridor, but that's actually where it existed. It didn't exist anywhere else on the zoning map under the UDO. There is, again, maybe this analysis we can do, how many acres are out there? How many lots and developed or non-developed? To get to the concerns about where.
We did it on that one side, Jones Derry School, didn't we?
But you did, yes, and that's, that's the only.
That's been pretty recent, I think.
That was during my time, so yeah, absolutely. And before then, I can't imagine the last industrial, rezone to industrial that the board approved. It's just the direction that the town's not been going. It's been the complete opposite from, and again, all that industrial zoning was, town zoning was on the Main Street corridor, remember that? There's Jones Derry one was ET, was a county zone. Why they had that out there in the middle of it, I don't know, but they still.
All right, anything else?
That's it. Those are my three items to present to you. Again, I think we've had some great conversations and some great.
Thank you. Did a great job on all three topics, I appreciate that. All right, we got a closed session, we still want to do the closed session. Before we go into closed session, I do want to, are you okay doing a brief update on HB 765? This is a, this is something that's got a lot of attention in the last few weeks. Some towns have been includes in some email chains. Some towns have adopted resolutions of opposition to HB 765. That's not the purpose of the, of the thing. I think we're gonna send you, we're gonna send the board information so they know what, what your elected officials downtown are talking about doing. You said it was 17 pages of it?
It's 26, so House Bill 765 is titled, "An Act to Reform Local Government Development Regulations and to Restore the American Dream", and is in the same line as the previous session and the restrictions that gave us the down-zone restriction. So this would be additional restrictions on 160D that towns could use. Among other things, the, it prohibits local zoning from regulating the size of lots, lot size minimums is no, would no longer be permitted. Imposing parking standards would no longer be permitted except to the extent to comply with the ADA. It would establish a shot clock for approvals by the town staff to administrative reviews and also for rezonings. I think for rezonings, it's 90 days. And if the town has not taken action in 90 days to approve or deny, it's considered approved as to the rezoning case. It's, it's a lengthy bill. Those are the ones that, that sort of caught my attention. I don't know if the, the mayor had some that, that gave him particular, it creates, creates additional causes of action by developers against towns that are alleged to have exceeded their regulatory rights. So it's a, you know, it's, it's, it's in the same theme as what has happened the past few sessions. Ostensibly, the, the idea behind this or the motivation behind this is the belief that some local governments have been overly aggressive in their regulations or have been slow to approve things. And that may have contributed to the lack of affordable housing in the state. That is the legislative intent.
I'll just, I'll just read you some, that's, that's some of the, some of the other towns, you know, have oppositions to, you know, to prohibit of local zoning from regulating aside location, the number of parking spaces greater than what is required under ADA. Require local governments to classify residential zoning districts based on the number of dwelling units per acre. Prohibiting governments, governments from classifying residential zoning districts based on minimum lot size. Prohibit designation of historical districts until 75% of the property owners within the posed district sign petition requesting the designation. Require local governments to allow tiny housing in residential and mixed-use residential zoning districts. And expand the scope of private judicial remedies and awards of attorney fees against municipalities, including the potential liability of individual members of the local decision-making board. That's a big legal term, so explain that last legal issue that some of the folks is, is kind of concerned with.
So to just expand upon that, the idea would be that there would be a cause of action by, by a developer who's aggrieved by the, by the result. There's already some power like this in, in the, in the law. But this would also make elected officials potentially liable for their actions. It's a, it's a chilling effect, sort of a statute, right? Everyone be very careful. Rollsville, Rollsville has never, in my experience, and, and, you know, I've worked with the town for a long time, has never had a circumstance where I was concerned that an elected official was anywhere close to the abuses that have, in my private practice, occurred in other places. There have been some bad actors in, in sort of the local government, elected official, land use development, sort of a realm. And, you know, those, you know, famous incidents sort of drive this overall concept that the, the applicants or property owners or developers, whichever group, is, is being taken advantage of.
So thank you, Dave. So, you know, I think some towns adopted resolutions in opposition. I've, you know, I've told y'all before, I've never, never been a big favor of drafting a resolution against the legislators downtown because they don't take it very well. And I don't think it's very productive, but reach out to your folks. If you know somebody, a senator, your, your representative or something, then talk to them about it. You know, that's the, talking is the best way to do. And I, I don't, I, I don't, I think, I think they believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, they believe this is gonna make homes cheaper somehow.
It'll destroy property.
I would, I would, I would not venture, I would not venture to say what they truly believe. But that certainly is the rhetoric and explains the title to the bill.
Yeah, so naturally, you know, if we have to have a planning department that can respond this quickly to permits or they're gonna be just, you know, automatically approved after so many days, it's gonna be more expensive. It's not gonna be cheaper, I don't think. It's gonna be more expensive and then everything else that goes with that. But, and then I think, I think, you know, citizens, the citizens elect us to make decisions like, you know, like we're making tonight on talking about, you know, future, and it just kind of limits that where, you know. So, so you could build, you can put a business in and not put in a parking unless it's just ADA parking is all you're required to put in or.
Correct. That's currently a, a planning movement across the country that has gained some legs.
So people just park in the streets or whatever.
Raleigh and Durham have already done that. They've, they've eliminated parking minimums and adopted the idea that the market, the development community will provide sufficient parking because they want to be able to sell the things that they build.
Okay, so, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how this will make things cheaper. But if you guys want, the board is the ones that adopt resolutions. So if you want to adopt a resolution after y'all read that, kind of let us know and we'll draft up one and we will adopt it. I'm not against adopting it, I just don't think it's very productive. I think it's more productive just talking.
How many towns have?
I've seen three or four today that adopted it. So I'm going to a mayor's meeting in Asheville tomorrow. So I'm pretty sure it'd be a topic there. So we'll find out. I mean, my experience with resolutions is just make them madder. And they dig in deeper when you, you know, you.
I, I would not disagree. My experience has been that an individual conversation about the practical problems with, I will forward the text of the bill to all the board members. I'm sure you will each find one where you can think very quickly how that might not be practical in Rollsville. Or that, let's say a shot clock makes sense so that a town doesn't hold a project up for a year. The answer is in 14 days, right? So you might be able to make more progress lobbying an individual representative as to where the changes need to be made rather than swinging a big bat and, and trying to embarrass the sponsors of the bill. That, that's just my thought. I, I think the mayor kind of shares that sentiment. In other legislative news, there are 26 down-zoning reform bills that have been filed, including the Wake Forest Rollsville one. And none of those have, none of those have been passed. There was a belief at one point that a fix to that would make its way into this, well, the original version of this, which was a, which was a different bill. This was a proposed committee substitute. But there's no relief on the down-zoning side. So even that carrot did not, did not make the cut. Fig leaf?
Thank you. Any questions today?
Olive branch?
We'll get the information to you, make, you know, you guys can decide. So with that, I think that concludes our business for tonight. I believe our attorney is, is asking for a closed session. Does someone have that?
I have it.
All right, I will entertain that.
If I could, just mention two things to you because I know that the closed session might result, will likely result in someone, Commissioner Michael Paul not being here once we return. But the first thing I want to do is just give you a rapid two-second update. In the budget for this fiscal year, we put in, excuse my voice as well. Lost it somewhere on this weekend. In the budget for this year, we put in renovations to the town chambers. And that we wanted to upgrade them. We know that we'll, we're, we are working on our town campus and, and that it is something that we are preparing for as far as town campus. But what we want to do is see how that we can put some effort into upgrading this town chambers right here so it'd be more functional for us, for board meetings, technology-wise and aesthetic-wise. And then also present an aesthetic that's more aspirational to the things that we're building with our police department, fire department, all the different spaces we're creating for our town as well. And we've been engaging with a interior designer that has been, that came in, we consulted. And within the narrow budget that we did create, they did put together a rendering that I wanted to present to you. Again, it's not gonna be something that's super extravagant, but just by refacing some of the things that are evident, you'll be able to see a very noticeable difference of what we'll be aspiring towards. And so I wanted to share this to you all, and I'll be providing with you an email. But our goal is to just get rid of the red carpet and go with a gray or like a blue and then reface the, the dais and then also make some alterations to the dais. You see on to the left side, you see Christina has to walk around to get back up to you into the podium to be able to step directly up. And that will also include a more, something that's not pictured in here will be another desk or table that has the same design for our police officers to sit there as well. But it would have got in the way of this particular aspect. And so we'll, I'll engage you all to see, get your feedback on it. Again, we're just trying to lighten it. And also the, the ceiling tiles will be replaced and will be lighter. And there will be some reorganization of some of the lights and move into a commercial lighting that's better on the eyes as we continue to work in this space as a conference room throughout the week. But I wanted to bring this to you and let you know that we've been working on that. Think it'd be a good, it's already been accounted for in our budget. So it's really the, what it looks like. And so we're just trying to make it a little bit more modern, more functional and also look better on our YouTube channel when people watch and tune in for our meetings. And we'll allow the lights to not be as yellow as you will see on YouTube. And so we're looking forward to that. And so I'll share this rendering with you and be able to get your feedback on it. But in general, we wanted to, we're targeting doing this work later this month. As you know, it's a longer month, there'd be some longer week gaps in between some of the meetings. And so we're trying to make it to where it doesn't interrupt town board meetings and also doesn't interrupt the work that goes on with staff. But that's something we're working towards. So I wanted to give you an update on that. And so I'll attach that to an email if y'all don't have any immediate thoughts on that.
Looks brighter and nicer.
It'll be brighter and nicer.
Yeah, I think, I think we've talked about, I know Dan's mentioned a few times about having a safety barrier up. So I didn't see that in there, so, you know. I don't know if you do it like a courtroom or something, just have a banister or something.
Yeah, so we're looking at those retractable banners that connect to the floor. You see that we've made some additional change right here that allow to just create another barrier. But we are looking into that with Isaac. And so we'll see what that looks like. It'll be something that'd be, to be in place and that can be removable as well since we use it as a conference room as well.
Good. Yeah, this works, you know. Great. Anything else?
The second thing is, we are working on three big dates for some things. It's an interim meeting, we'll be doing an all-staff meeting that you don't, with this, letting you know about that. And then there'll be a second meeting, there'll be a joint meeting between you all as the board, the Rollsville Downtown Development Association and the planning board. And that will be nailing down that date and I'm working with y'all via email on that. But the more immediate one that has, that we need to make a decision on will be just a board retreat, a board, training board retreat. We've been engaging with the School of Government to provide that training. We've been engaging with the school of government to provide that training. They are booked solid through next summer. And so they came back to us, myself and Stephen, and said that the only time that they could do will be in early October, okay? And so what I'm looking to you all for is October the 3rd, which is a Friday, and October the 10th, their first Friday or second Friday, if either one of those dates worked for you. And I want to just pose those dates to you for you to think about. I know that some of the commissioners are not here and I know that you may not have your work calendars in front of you, but I wanted to just let you all know about that. And that's something that we'll be pushing for, it's one of those we found out today, so letting you know as soon as possible.
So is it a work session or training session?
It will be, it will be like a retreat. So it's not a work session, it's like we're doing town work, but it'd be looking at, as you know, I've complimented you all as a board of how you've been able to work together, how you've been cohesive, and so how do we continue to, to build on the work that y'all done as the board to set norms for future iterations of the board, but also for you to work and collaborate on how you all can work better, how you engage with us, how you engage with staff, and then also look at how some of the new statutes and things that other boards may be doing to streamline their work, you know, what that would be. And so it'll be essentially like a board retreat, board training.
Who hasn't been doing that until the new board is seated?
So they, yes, and that training will be something that will, will use to onboard the new board members. And so establishing the norms to, with you all, since you already work as a board, and then when you bring on, onboard the new board member, this is what you will be onboarding them into, like the way that you operate. That makes sense.
What do y'all think?
That's an all day event?
No, it's not an all day event. It's three hours, four hours? Three and a half to four hours. So it's a half day, start at one o'clock. The goal was not to do any all day things for you all, start at one o'clock.
The date is either October 3rd or 10th?
Or the 10th, it's the Fridays, those Fridays.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm out of time on.
Yeah, I'm out on the 3rd for what it's worth.
Okay. And I can, I can send those over to you with an email, in an email so you can respond back, but.
Yeah, I'll be gone from the 2nd to the 5th. But what was your second date?
The 10th.
The 10th?
Yes.
I think 10th would be better for me. How about you? I guess you have to reach out to Linwood and?
I can reach out to them.
Yeah, the, the 10th date did much, much better.
Okay. All right.
We get quick update on our intersection?
Oh, yes, intersection is, everything's moving, illuminate the, so the goal of reach of having it open by the end of the month, still there, First Amendment has not said that there would be any barriers to doing that. As you know, it's forecast for it to rain today, it didn't rain very much, they worked through the day today. It's forecast to have rain tomorrow, hopefully we have the same thing. Everything is going well as far as the, the signal, illuminate as far as the signal, so they're out there, if you rode by, you saw them cutting in loops. So those are the things that create the magnetic on the ground that your car drives up, signals it. The pedestrian heads are up and they're covered right now, and so they're running that. And we've submitted a work order to Duke Energy for the meter to power that. And so once I get the work order number back, and that's all be engaged in our government affairs representative on that, so that he can help expedite that. But everything is going well. The only thing that we were concerned about was the weather and it didn't rain when the weatherman said it would rain, and we hope that it'll continue being, being the case. The communicated date was the end of September, which is that Tuesday, the 30th. We do have a stretch goal of it being sooner than that, which I believe we're on time to do, but in general, I'll definitely let you know, concrete is in, they will start backfilling that concrete on, backfilling the concrete, the, the curb and gutter, the curb and gutter is in on the east young side for the most part, so they'll start backfilling that. They've already started working on the pavers on that side, starting at Suzanne's, stretching around. They're complete, they're done with the pavers on the west young side, on the private side. I encourage y'all to just walk out and look at it. They look phenomenal. It's a, a traffic grade, railway, vehicle grade, vehicle strength, paver, multi, multiple sizes between square and rectangle that fits very, very nicely down there. The tie-ins to the existing infrastructure have been very, very clean. The doorways to Suzanne's Antiques, it comes straight up as planned, we're getting good flow, percentage flow as far as like slope for storm, stormwater running off, and so everything's looked really, really good. I think we're on pace. With that, we had a meeting this morning, we're working through some other things around it, but as far as the stuff that pertains to getting that intersection back open at the agreed upon time, we're on schedule to do that. And so.
So is the signals worked out? I know it's been reported that it's going to be held up 14 days, DOT is on.
No, so it's a pre-existing signal, and so since the, since the signal exists before, a lot of the things that come along with a new signal does not apply to this one. It's a seven day burn period, but that's built into the, to make sure it's the functionality of it, but that's built into that schedule. And so the burn period was to start on next Tuesday, and that's the planned date for that. I don't know if that's, it's one of the, the low 20 dates, but they'll start their burn period for that and be ready, should be ready to go for that.
And the purpose is for safety, people will run a stoplight if you don't have a burn?
A stoplight is very, very important. And so what they do is the burn is so that you know that, and when it's manufactured, the light, it works the way it's supposed to work, the timing worked the way for its time, but it literally blinks, right? But during the, the burn period, it'd be flashing yellow one way and red the other, and so it essentially function as a four-way stop sign, a signalized, a signalized four-way stop sign, right?
But I hear it won't be opened though. It, it's not a four-way stop, it's a, it's just, it's going to stay closed until it goes through the period. Is that true?
No.
No?
It'll be open while it's flashing.
It'll be open while it's flashing.
But all four, all four sides?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be open while it's flashing, yeah. The only thing that's limited, the only thing that'll limit the east young and west young sides is pedestrian signals. So one thing that you'll see is that, I think it's on Thursday, tomorrow, tomorrow, Thursday, they removed the concrete barrier down the middle and it'd be free flowing traffic down north main, because that par will be done. This, I think it's, I think it's tomorrow. It's Wednesday, tomorrow, Thursday. We haven't made an announcement about it because all it'd be was those, those temporary three, those lights would just move away, and then you'd be able to move freely.
That's good.
But they've already done it, the temporary striping on, on both sides, on the east young side, and so as you drive through, you see that there are striping on the ground. That's the, that is the turn lane, center turn lane, and then the, the west, the west side, well, the side of the side, then there's a turn lane in there. And then it'll, before they move, remove the concrete barriers, they put in the temporary striping on the other side. And so you'll see that it'll be, the full width of the road will be open for traffic to flow. But the signal is the only thing.
Good. The street park can be open at the same time?
Street park gonna be open? Not, well, what do you mean by that?
The diagonal and the?
When the, when the, when the, when the road is open, will the street park can be open? Yes. When the whole, when the whole intersection opens, the parallel parking will be open as well.
Because there's some parallel and some diagonal.
There is some parallel, there's some perpend.
Diagonal.
Parallel and diagonal, yeah. Parallel, diagonal, perpendicular, yeah. Parallel, diagonal.
Yes, that's going to be a big, big plus. So end of the month, everything?
Yep.
Lights and all, good. Any other questions? Any other thing? Good, good report. Good to hear. Anything else? I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I moved that the board go into closed session to consult with the town attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege pursuant to chapter 143, section 318 dot 11a 3 of the North Carolina General Statutes. The board expects to receive information regarding the town of Roseville versus Edens Family LLC eminent domain matters.
Second. So I got a motion, second, any other discussion? Not hearing any, all his favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I sound have it, I do have it, but we will recess in the closed session and we will open it back up. We don't expect to do any board business once we open back up, though. But thanks, appreciate it. We don't expect to do any more business once we open back up, though. But thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, we have come out of recess. We was in recess for a closed session. Want to thank the board for that. We had a good work session kind of wrapping up. I will mention the 9/11 event. I think both of you guys was at the 9/11 event. It turned out really well. I'm really pleased with the program and all the things that happened there. Want to thank the staff, Eric and I know Christina worked really hard on that.
And Stephen.
And Stephen did too. So thank you all for that. It's a good event. So a lot of people from outside the state that it came down. So really thank you for that. So with that, unless someone, anybody else have anything they want to add? All right. Unless I hear opposition, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. So without opposition, we are adjourned. Thank you.